In all the property that you have, particularly on Pinkham Road, did you have a problem putting five acre lots in there?
Yes.
You had a problem? You couldn't do it? Why?
Because according to part of the zoning ordinance, you have to have five acres of hoppin'. What was cannot be included towards.
Okay, what about your property over on Pinkham? Have you had problems over there?
On Pinkham or on Kings Island?
Either way.
Uh, no, we haven't had any problems. It's just, that just came up.
Okay. The next time Lynn puts an email out to anybody in this office, the way she did this one, she better think twice. You don't insult the planning board and then think you're gonna come before us and we're gonna be all jolly and happy.
Okay, I wasn't aware of. I wasn't aware of her emails, I'm sorry.
She said, can you please send me a copy of the map of the district? I don't find it on your website, which isn't surprising. Do the board members realize obtaining five acres of continuous building lot area is virtually impossible? That's been the zoning for the past, I don't know, five or six years, five acre lots? Nobody's had problems before. And she says, I don't think you completely understand how much surveying that would entail in a very large piece of property. We've had larger pieces than that. So tell her she needs to get off her duff. And if we don't have anything online, then she needs to put herself over here. It's not up to Robin to do her work for her.
I didn't pass it on her.
Thank you. Now, with regards to your request for a waiver, you left out.
Can we just stop for a minute, Janet?
Yep.
All right, so Jeff, you're here for just the.
Pre-application discussion.
Huh?
Just a pre-application discussion.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to move stuff along.
Well, I asked Robin to do this into us first because it is a public hearing.
Okay.
After we get them settled, then Jeff, we can take Jeff during it.
Okay, all right.
You made a waiver for the delineation.
Correct, yeah.
Which is okay.
On the remaining land, yep.
But you should have referenced 4.16.3, which tells you, it's on page, um, hold on. It's on page thirty-four. It explains the reasoning for the waiver and what have you. And that should be listed in, on your request. So if you correct that and add that to it, that would be, you know.
Okay, so in addition to four dot six dot.
Right.
Add four dot six dot three?
That'd be four dot sixteen dot three.
Oh, dot sixteen dot three, okay.
Yeah. And once you do that, and then you give it to Robin, you'll get your waiver. The only other problem I see is on the plan, it's on there, September two thousand twenty-four. It's gotta have a date.
Okay.
Okay? And lot nine, and then you've got lot two, nine two and nine three. You gotta, it's gotta be nine one.
I, I checked out with Robin, but you went out behind us. It is nine dot one already.
Okay. But I don't think that was on the plan. I might have missed it, but that's why.
Yeah, I think that, I got it in the, the obiter text on the north side of Robin.
As long as you've got nine one in there.
I already decided there already is a nine on that.
Correct, yep. Yep.
Okay, I see map sixteen, lot nine, lot two and lot three. I don't see a lot one on here.
Right here, Janet.
Yeah, it should be.
Oh, up there.
Yeah, yeah.
I was looking down here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, no, that's just the backland.
All right, so this one is not, so that's nine one?
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Okay. So that satisfies me. I'm standing in for John Moan, so. Other than that, as long as that's on there and you date the plan.
Yep.
And just correct that letter, then they'll accept it.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Statement name, please.
Kevin Ison.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Kevin Haffer.
Kevin Haffer, please.
I own the property behind Sendorf.
Okay.
And the only access to ours is a roadway by the line which goes through their property, real right into my property. It is not needed, but it is the only access to our land. I don't see any place on that plan that shows that. So where is my access gonna be? You can't Land Law, Kenbro.
No.
That's my only access.
Can I ask a question? Go for it. Does your D have state that there's a right of way?
It does not.
Does the other D, and you've accessed, that's the way you've accessed the property?
That's the only way we can access the property.
You can get it from John?
No, because John, it goes up this way.
Oh, okay.
Okay, where's the barn? Barn, I think it's like right here, right here. Okay?
And if you did a walk-through on the property, you could see where the road going right through theirs, through the backland, right into mine. And it goes all the way up to John's property.
Yeah, and I didn't notice a whole lot out there. I mean, I, I don't doubt that there is an access. Everything's pretty grown in. I mean, we have.
Oh, yeah, no, after they logged theirs, but everyone by theirs, you can see, especially in the fall.
Yep.
You can see where there's.
And most, most of my survey even occurred in.
In the front.
Well, no, I, I don't know. Okay, but most of my survey even occurred in, uh, even in November, December last year, probably in December, January. Go ahead, and then April, July, when everything was fully moved out.
Right.
So we.
So what is the law or is there a, are there, or, or.
Okay. So, all right, so kind of new for us, this circumstance, because it hasn't happened. So you've been accessing the property through this piece of property?
That's the only access, yep.
Is that true?
I'm not aware. IRS, I'm not aware.
So I would, my, my thought is.
We don't have these.
No, 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 I understand that, so.
If you're an access, we've never had.
Right, so my understanding, so what I would say is we would need to, there would need to be some deed, probably some researching and some deeds, because it might not be in your current deed. It might not say, it might go back two or three deeds that say right of, and I don't know how far back you went.
I brought that piece back quite a bit, and I didn't notice anything about that. Like, it could be attached to something separate. So it could need some more kind of work to try and track that down.
Yeah. Anybody else? Yes?
This is Dorothy, I'm Dorothy Christine Chesley, a father and sister of Jonathan. I have a statement to make on this during the hearing. Is that going to be following?
The hearing's right now, current.
This is the.
Oh, I think May walked in after the hearing started, so.
I'm sorry, we're about two, six thirty.
Oh, yeah, and if you could sign in as well, right behind you, right? It's okay, it's right behind you. That way it helps our clerk here get everybody's name and.
Oh, it's great.
Spells it correctly, yeah.
Did everybody else sign in?
No, we're on the side here.
Thank you.
Okay, is your statement, the letter that.
Excuse me?
Is your, is your statement based on the letter that.
Joseph.
Joseph sent in?
It is not based on it. We have the same kind of basic concerns. My brother Joseph sent that, knowing that he didn't, as not being in a butter, he didn't have a voice himself, so he sent it in support of me.
Okay, so what is?
Okay. Dear members of the planning board, my name is Dorothy Christine Chesley, sister of and property of Butter to Jonathan Edward Sendorf. My husband Gary John Chesley and I are here tonight as a butters to protest the Jonathan E. and Patricia D. Sendorf Trust application for this subdivision. The proposed subdivision is not what our parents wanted. I will follow up facts to prove this. Follow up with facts to prove this. Proving this proposed subdivision would create an injustice which could not be fixed down the road. Therefore, we respectfully request for this proposal to be tabled for six months to allow time for we three siblings to come to an amiable agreement. Our parents were John H. Sendorf and Dorothy L. Sendorf. We three siblings are their children. First born Joseph P. Sendorf of sixty-six twenty-nine Grandia Drive, Rockford, Michigan. Second born D. Christine Chesley of three zero seven Kings Highway, Middleton, New Hampshire. Third born Jonathan E. Sendorf of three two three Kings Highway, Middleton, New Hampshire. Dad loved the land that we lived on and he wanted us to love it too. When Gary and I were engaged in nineteen seventy-eight as a wedding gift, Dad gave us land where we could build a home, just two acres to start with. He gave us a few ideas of spots that we thought would work well, and we chose a piece of land where we currently live. Gary and I cleared the land ourselves using an old Model A tractor to pull the young kinds out of the ground by their roots and routing them into piles for burning. My brother Joe assisted Gary in marking the area for the foundation and designing the curve of our driveway. He, like my dad, has a love for the land as do we. Dad also asked Joe to create a cross-country ski trail in the woods behind our home, which we have maintained and continue to enjoy, and which we also use as a trail for hauling out firewood with our lawn tractor. We moved into our home in the spring of nineteen eighty and have now been living there for forty-four years. Our parents gave us two albatrees and two peach trees, which we planted in the early years, and we have since cleared a backfield and added a row of semi-gorge albatrees. We love our land and refer to our backyard as our own private Eden. When my brother Joseph and his wife Kathleen were married in the fall of nineteen eighty-two, Dad gave them land as a wedding gift too. But since they were living in Virginia at the time, the transfer was put off until a more convenient time when they would be ready to build on the land. In the nineteen eighty treaty, Dad gave Gary and me a signed drawing of an additional two acres that he wanted to add to the original two acres that he had gifted us. He said that we just needed to get the legal work done for, done for a simple boundary line adjustment. We didn't do the work right away because finances were tight and life was busy, but we have kept that drawing in a safe place and hope that we can soon follow through with the boundary line adjustment. Fast forward to nineteen ninety-four, when my dad had a debilitating stroke. He was in rehab for three months, and while there, my mother paid for and Jonathan oversaw renovations on the house to make the downstairs handicap accessible and create an upstairs apartment for Jonathan and his family. Not long after Jonathan and his family moved into our parents' house, Jonathan asked Gary and me to attend a meeting with a lawyer and a court smith, saying that we needed to put our parents' estate into a trust in order to protect it for our family, in case either of our, of our parents had to go into a nursing home or had some other huge expenses. My older brother Joe was not informed at the meeting or invited to intend, to attend, which he probably would have if he had known. At the meeting, excuse me, the lawyer explained that usually one sibling is chosen as the trustee, and usually it's someone who is local, probably said to remove Joe from consideration. Dad pointed at me to indicate that he wanted to be the trustee. Because of the stroke, he had lost the ability to speak, but his intention was clear. We all knew that he wanted me to be the trustee. This meeting was a complete surprise to Gary and me, and therefore we had done no preparation or research and knew nothing about trusts. I explained to Dad that I didn't know anything about trusts, and since Jonathan seemed to know what was going on, he would probably be the better choice. At least three times during the meeting, choosing a trustee was discussed, and each time Dad became very animated, pointing at me and insisting that he wanted me to be the trustee. Finally, he gave up. He hung his head and shook it sadly. How I wish I had done what my dad asked. How different things would be. I know that I let him down and I let us all down, and for that, I'm so very sorry. That was the only item of business addressed at that meeting, choosing a trustee. I took the opportunity to present the signed drawing of the additional two acres, which Dad had given us, and everyone there acknowledged it, including Dad and Mom, Jonathan and the lawyer. But the lawyer said that it would have to wait until after our parents passed away and the trust had ended. There seemed to be a rush to get things moving as quickly as possible to get the trust in place. Gary and I were not invited to any additional meetings, but I came to realize through the years that Jonathan had obtained durable power of attorney, and now I realize that he evidently was somehow able to nullify our parents' will and remove our elder brother Joseph as executor of that will. Because the land was in a trust, our brother Joseph and his family were unable to build the cottage that they had wanted to build on their land because they couldn't get a deed until the land was no longer in a trust. At least that is what Jonathan told us. On one of Joe's visits to New Hampshire to visit Mom as she was winding down, we were all gathered together with Jonathan, and Joe told us about the piece of land that he had chosen. We all agreed that piece of land would be his. He described an L-shaped piece of land next to the stream with two hundred feet frontage going all the way to the back of the property with an L going in behind the Gwes property. Looking back in my journal, I read that on Sunday, July twenty-three, twenty seventeen, just a little over four months before Mom passed away, on the last day of Joe and Kathy's visit with us, we all went out for dinner after church with Jonathan and his family and spent two hours of good conversation over dinner, saying our goodbyes in the parking lot. I think that may have been the end of the visit in which we had that conversation about the land for Joe and Kathy. Mom passed away in December of twenty seventeen. John assured us that we would meet and talk about our parents' estate, but we never did. He said that we needed, he needed time and space after Mom's passing, and we patiently gave him as much time as he needed. He and Kathy have distanced themselves from us. Gary and I were shocked when we received the certified letter from the town with the Butters notice for this subdivision plan, which made it obvious to us that Jonathan has decided to not honor the wishes of our parents and is attempting to take our parents' entire estate for himself, cutting Joseph and me out of any inheritance from our parents and ignoring the land that had been gifted to Joe and me and our spouses earlier by our Dad, as I outlined above. So it is clear to see that our parents' wishes have not been honored, and if this subdivision application is approved as is, it will create an injustice that cannot be fixed down the road. Thus, Gary and I respectfully request that the subdivision proposal be tabled, allowing time for we three siblings to be required to meet, to come to an amiable agreement, which would allow the intentions of our parents to be carried out. We need an adequate amount of time to do this, knowing the reluctance of Jonathan to discuss this with Joseph or me, and are therefore requesting six months for this purpose. I have a copy of this for each of you, and I also have a photocopy of that drawing that my dad made. Excuse me. That's a photocopy, and one, two, three, four. Excuse me. So you did get Joe's letter, it sounds like, which is great. Did you have a chance to read that? Joe's letter?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Who should I give the drawing to? I only have one copy of that.
It's down to Chris.
Oh. Now, this is on the original, which is in a safe place. All the little tiny numbers and everything can be read well, but that, you can see my, our original two acres and how he widened it and then went all the way back to his stone wall. This is us, the Chesleys, our original two hundred foot frontage, and then he expanded it, I think it's two eighty. It's very clear on the other one. I'm sorry, this is the best I could do if my friends were at home. And this is the back stone wall. This is where our ski trail is that I was talking about, all in here, and these woods we have used as our own and down the stream all these years as our own. Nobody steps foot there, and this, this was ours. And across the street, you have an, oh, here, is that the plan here? Yes. Joe's was this two hundred feet from the Gwes corner. Two hundred feet this way, all the way to the back, and this L here, not this over here, but just the L in behind the Gwes. As the firstborn, Dad gave him, you know, he really took him under his wing and taught him how to do these things. That's how he was able to help Gary with planning on our own land and. Could I shut this down?
Yeah, please, thank you.
So I guess I'll ask Janet and Roxanne, because you guys are more seasoned people, but I guess you're having to kind of run things. What is?
I would, this, I, this is my, this is my two cents, and certainly anybody speaks it. I mean, I don't think we're looking to table anything for six months. I will say, I would be willing to table till next month, till we have a chance, the town has a chance to consult our attorney to see what we are, we can and can't do. Because I will say this is, if the property, you know, I mean, if they tell us, come back and say, you know, the property's in these people's, we as a town can't tell them, you know, yes, or we can't tell them no because it's based off of maybe, you know, some family issues. So I, that's my recommendation. By the next meeting, we will have reached out to our attorney, and we want to find out about the right of way with the access to your property. So I think what we need to do is reach out to.
Absolutely.
Town attorney, find out about your situation, in your situation, what we can legally do from the town, because, you know, I, obviously, I, we have to look out for the best interest of the town, and I know that we don't want to delay this any more than anybody else wants to delay this, at least in our, I mean.
I will say that we, since my mom's death, we have waited over six years. In December, it will be seven years since she passed, and we have been patient, and we're totally shocked to see that this had happened. And my brother is right now, I don't know if he told you in the, I don't know, but he is in Romania, he just left yesterday. Every month, for the next six months, he has trips. His work is, he's a humanitarian film producer.
And, and I understand that.
When's the next meeting? Because we're traveling as well for three weeks.
The next meeting would be, give me one minute, it would be November fourteenth.
We're not even home yet from our trip then. We get home that Saturday.
So for us as planning board, we have a criteria that we have to follow, and if they meet all the requirements and everything else, we can.
But, but Roxanne's right.
Yes.
We need to consult the attorney before we make any decision. Because it could put us in the middle of something.
Right, the idea would be that we will consult the attorney, get some, get their response back to us, and we will know at the next meeting how we can proceed.
Would you ask if it would be possible to put it off at least until the following meeting, since we will be in Texas at that time? Our kids moved to Texas during COVID. They have a house down there, this is our first trip to visit them. We will be gone for three weeks. We'll come home that Saturday.
So I would, so the only thing that I would recommend is basically, we either, you have the meeting on the seventh of November?
Uh, no, because we're gone.
I'm just saying, I mean, we have, I'm just saying. And then the twenty-first, or you can do it on the twenty-first, I can call in, I'll be traveling from work.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's, I think we can either do, we can either go.
When is that Saturday? It's like the sixteenth or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, so after that, I mean, it'd be nice to get a good place, we find a route, and we do have to go pick our cat up the next day, Sunday. Monday would be fine.
So we can maybe push the meeting out to November twenty-first, and that's, that's where.
November twenty-first.
Go any further than that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's, I, I'm, I apologize that you guys are all going through this. My, my father-in-law would do this with his family. I think it's heartbreaking because that's not what this is all, but when a family passes down property and stuff, it's meant to keep everybody together, not their general heart. And it's sad that this is happening. I'm sorry. I hate that we're kind of, kind of now being put monkey in the middle, because it sounds like it's going to turn out to be a civil issue, but, I mean, to keep kicking the can down the road, we have to look into what the town attorney says, and then move on from, from there, I mean, to keep.
Right, so put it, put the meeting on the twenty-first.
Yep.
So. We'll have an answer. They'll be back.
And I'll see if maybe my brother, will, it, would it be all right for him to come and support me at the meeting? Okay, I'll see if he might be able to be.
It's a public meeting, you don't have to be a property owner to attend or speak.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Just one quick thing. There are, the trust was in place for a long time before my father's death. The other family members were aware of it, that they were making sense as, are always present for the creation of a trust, and the decision is how it was made. I didn't go into it with the intention of anything other than preserving the transproperty. But here's the thing, one quick thing. There are, there was no agreement, no deed, no nothing for any other property being away on that side, and Chris says that there were two acres penciled out. Many years passed by, and she could have taken care of that when my father was alive. As my brother, if he wanted property, he could have approached my father. This has been settled for a long time. My mother passed away in twenty seventeen.
Right.
The law is pretty clear on this.
Right, okay, so we're, we're not here to dispute any of that tonight.
Right.
What we're gonna say is, we are willing, as a board, to reach out to our attorneys to say what we can and can't do legally, and then we can come back and we can just hopefully put all of this to bed on November twenty-first. So Robin, if we can make note, we're going to move the planning board out a week from next month. Continue the hearing, yes, so we will, we will recess the hearing a little bit, not quite yet.
Are you able to advise us on what our next steps could be for my brother and I? Or do we need to get.
No, I, I, no, I would say as a board, we are not going.
We need to get vehicle help?
Yes, as a board, we are not going to speak. We can only speak for the town's behalf, and so what we're gonna do from the town's behalf is, we're gonna reach out to our legal counsel to say what's, yeah, and I agree with Christine, this is unfortunate circumstances.
It is unfortunate.
And I can tell you, I've been down that road myself, so.
And my dad's legacy is so much more than the land. There is so much more about my dad than his land.
So, um, so any, any other comments regarding this public hearing?
I have a question.
State your name, please. I'm sorry.
Did you reference, when you took over waivers, did you open up the dialogue? Did you summarize those three you filed?
No, there's only one waiver. They want a waiver for delineation of the wetlands. And what I said to him was, he referenced one ordinance. Right, he referenced one ordinance. He has to reference. He has to reference two of the ordinances. Once you, once he, once that letter was rewritten, when you come back, it'll be approved.
Yep.
That's the only stipulation on that.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask if there were any other changes. I can correct that on the letter, as well as I can amend the date on that plan.
Yep.
Have that all squared away, so I'll end up, I'll re-submit copies of that before the next meeting.
That's the only, those are the only changes I had.
So, so we're all good with no way claims?
Yep, we're all good with no way claims.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, yeah, one minute, John. And we heard from the Butters. Just want to make sure everybody's gonna get their, you know, wants to get to say something if they need to say something. So go ahead, Jonathan, if you wanted to say something.
I feel firmly directed not, you know, accepting that there needs to be a right of way back to the property behind us, but if there does, does room exist in the other parcel that we're not talking about? Does man extend far enough to admit lies, so not one of the two parcels we're looking at, so I look down there?
That's something you guys have to take off, right?
No, no problem. I don't care where I've got assets, as long as I've got legal. no problem I don't care wherever I get assets as long as I get legal access from my law came to that
so so what I would say is
as long as it was wet I could get through it
that might be a
at no point where I won't avoid it
that's something that you guys
so that's a discussion outside of the planning board products
right can you find out if there's any obligation then of course we
right and okay yeah we will I mean just try and keep everybody yeah I know any other comments questions so we'll leave this
one more
yeah no that's fine
in the state law is considered something that says you can't landwalk
so this is what we
you have to if there isn't a right of way that the town has to give you a right of way
eastern
so so this is right so this is right so no this is what we will this is what we pay our attorneys for
I'm just asking if you're new
I don't know if
that's why I understood the law
she's got your cover don't worry yes I've got my two points
this book is pretty
oh no
so um so I would say we'll leave the we'll leave the public hearing open for a little bit longer and if there are anything anything immediate right now we'll go back to Jeff yes who's a regular
I know my track and rabbit's
he loves us so much he's not much more don't hit the microphone Jeff oh that's alright if you do he's not much more than that Jeff so
I know
here Roxanne
one more paper thank you
brother has got another one goodness okay so
you guys can do like
alright so this is just a preliminary I'm sorry this is my choice to move forward it makes it hard for our work to hear
it's possible
so I was asked to have any side conversation held at the end of the meeting I don't mean to be mean but you know we all wanna try to get out of here as well so or you know so Jeff you're here for the preliminary hearing
just a pre-application discussion we you know basically I'm here just to go over the law we know that a butter may be added and the stuff I think we changed everything for 26 acres we're looking for six lots out of the 126 acres
what's six lots can you just one two three four tell me
so we've got one two the pork trotting is three four five six
okay so these so these means they're being
they're together
okay thank you that's why I was
yeah no problem
yeah so the
this little
that little seeds
that's like a paperclip
it's a whole of two
yeah
okay
we do have in the other than those six lots which range we have a 48 acre lot an eight acre lot six acre lot 25 acre lot and an 8.2 acre lot all have and we have a 9.6 acre lot all qualify for five acres or more upland land that can be counted and parcel A and parcel B if you look on the right-hand side that will be a lot line adjustment with the Gagnes they will be purchasing that 20.70 acres with the 50 feet that goes down to Pinkham Road or goes down to their lot I'm sorry
which one are they talking about this one right here
yeah this one right here
because this because this is all the stuff that like this is King's Highland right here right
yeah yeah so we're giving them access up here that they will own that that will be owned land so the property land will actually
oh so right because they won't be needing a right of way
so that they can access the back lot
okay
um other than specifics on the plan that need to be addressed such as adding a Butters and changing some things and whatnot I believe the lots will meet the town do very usually meet the town requirements
so they'll meet the five acre upland
yep they all meet it yep and we've put power on the road all the way down we've installed power all the way down Pinkham Road so those lots will all have power and again it's a simple six lot subdivision out of 126 acres I'll have all that in the application
our principal
so we're just looking just make sure that we were thinking the same way the town's thinking big lots rural rural character
yeah well they have to be minimum five anyway so yeah so on wetlands
yep
so I think other than that I think we're good Jeff
yeah that's all I need
so are you going to be looking to be on the next
yeah we'll submit for November
okay so then Robin will take care of
okay yes so we'll have a hearing at the next meeting
yeah a full application everything about us yeah
I think Robin's gonna be on your payroll
she ought to maybe she works hard
she's a ladyhead or high school student
yeah if you don't feel like it needs to sit
a new microphone
yeah I just I don't mean alright so I'll put this one to me again and you do you want one
Jen do you want one I've got one no okay
alright so we're good
we'll see you in November the 21st
the 21st
if I have to come to the next meeting yes I'll make one but right now I don't
okay okay does that mean that my requirements bump back two weeks to get everything to Robin since we only need 21 days of notice so by November by the 31st
yeah yeah because that meeting is the 21st so you go by that date
yeah three weeks yeah so I just wanted to make sure that everything
so you go by yeah you go by that date
yeah
I'll be around
okay
I'm not I'm not permanent anymore I can't I can't stand that
yeah yeah well it's good to see you
thank you
yeah Robin
same here
okay I'll see you
Jeff
wait a minute wait a minute the meeting on 14th is canceled
yes we are going to say have it on the 21st instead of the 14th
do we need to make a motion for that
we can make a motion
so I'm gonna get a so I'm
I hated to put you on the spot I know I couldn't lie
so
alright thank you
so I'm gonna make a motion that we change the November meeting from the 14th to the 21st
Allison here
yeah that covers that
does anybody else have any other questions comments for the hearing
I'll I'll make a motion that we oh you saw
yeah one thing except any certified lot I gotta get it I didn't get a notice of it until Monday so I was just wondering you know how does that work for all on a lot and I get one day's notice
it was sent out two weeks ahead of time I can look into why you didn't get it but it was definitely sent out two weeks ahead of time
yeah we never got a notice of
yeah I mean the law requires us to put it in the mail two weeks
and we would have and we would have a receipt showing and we did it on time and I don't want to say unfortunate we can't
no I was just wondering if it was
we are required to send them out two weeks beforehand and we keep all those receipts because of something
I'm checking to it
you didn't get a slip in your mailbox except you have
we did one day
so yeah
the first time we got a slip I picked it up Wednesday and the hearing was
tough for me
at least it was before the meeting
no I did get it before meeting but
yeah you're here
it's not good
no I hear you I hear you well if you don't get another letter
you won't
but that's right you won't just remember it's the 21st the 21st November here
that's a public
if you want to give me your phone number or just write it down for me I'll call you my final we got our letter
John thought this was gonna be simple
yeah they all have a change
so can we get a
a motion to recess
can we get a motion to recess the public hearing until November 21st
yeah
yeah go ahead John
I I moved to recess the public hearing until 21st so we can continue based on legal counsel and grasp the residents and come to terms on their own which is fine
yeah I'll second I'll second that
if you guys become the terms in your own
we're we're recessing the pub we're recessing the public hearing until November 21st at 6:30 I'll second
all in favor
aye we just recessed that's all the thing John
I know well
can I do right now to your time of consideration
no Robin we'll see you on 21st
yes thank you
yeah
and if you can't make it you can always write us
okay and you should have some sort of a answer
well we that's our that's our intent to make sure the lawyers do get back to us like that gives them a month and like that gives
no that's fine
well
if not I'd say
we will if something changes we would let you know
okay
what you should do is be in touch with Jonathan and Norway claims to see where they can put that right of way before the next meeting
okay so that was Norway claims is the interim
yeah okay
okay thank you
so go ahead Christine you're done
I get it
thank you
Janet is leaving
I'm outta here
thanks thanks for showing
no problem
gotta get those Christmas decorations though
not yet
any public comments or questions
another comment
nothing alright review meeting minutes September 12th did everybody
yeah
we have September 12th we have the 19th site visit and 19th workshop do you have any questions comments concerns
I'll be somebody who you want to make a motion to
sure I mean who the mission red
and provide for all
I'll second it you're making the motion for September 12th now minutes September 19th the site visit
all three
okay I'll second it
all in favor
okay I don't know what to say
I have no communication
I actually have one thing for communication
okay yeah
I just I wanted to let everyone know I think you probably saw the email the tax maps are gonna be updated this is our last chance to make any changes till next year so if there's something you might know about that's wrong I changed the private roads that you would ask for I haven't changed that I put in all the mergers and subdivisions that I know about so but sometimes it's an error or somebody says something about their acres being wrong or something so you know anything
mine is wrong but
and otherwise I'm gonna give them a go-ahead Tuesday
okay
and then the one other thing and you probably know Middleton workforce housing has asked us to supply any text messages or emails that might have been exchanged between Milton workforce housing and anybody representing the town so I I know Janet did have something she gave me
I so okay I did search the BOs email and I think I have four and I think it's basically stuff that came from you I did save them in PDF I will email them off to you I did it all I did was a high-level search for our email and that's yeah
yeah yeah do that and then some of it might be trying to find perfect
no I no we as the board of selectmen haven't talked have not had because that's pretty much we left the ZBA that's that's pretty much all in the ZBA
okay I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything
no I'm I'm not aware of any but but like I said I did find I think three or four and I made PDFs and I just need to get in the office to send them to you
okay thank you
yeah okay so the next thing would be the budget review so we have to have our budget in to you guys BOs
yeah probably not the end of next Friday
okay so I don't know if you want to talk about it now I mean I kind of think maybe keeping it the same even though we haven't gone over any of it but
no I would agree I think I think if we keep the budget the same I know we haven't used anything legal but I believe that well we will be this coming month but I do believe we probably will be using it over the next year
yeah and I think it would be good also for for reviewing out the ordinances and all that stuff to
yeah well I think that was kind of the intent so I I would agree that
we can just keep it the same
right but I mean I do we do need to fill out you have to fill out these budget justifications
alright I can when does John get that
he's gone for two weeks so he won't be back until he won't be back until after this is due
okay I'll fill it out and I'll get it over to you or you
he's gonna send it to Kim
oh yeah
that's fine
if you want to if you want to give it to me Christine I'll say I'll put a copy on the planning board email and then John can save it at any point
okay
yeah I do think the biggest ones you're gonna you get the it'll be the Stratford region but we use half that but it's gonna be the legal
what do you think we don't use it back
I think it's in the
yeah
yep
well it's no threat like that
yeah I mean we're not gonna go up on anything I think if we keep it the same it'll be fine alright and then building permit reviews is this all the building permits for just a month
no this is issued from August 1st to now
yeah August 1st until the 7th
yeah
it's all kinds of permits
upgrade wiring replacing siding okay so here we go we have
yeah
some Robin do you know anything about this one that's on 62 Pond Road Pond Road correct me wrong it's up off of Access alright so any before a building permit can be issued to anything that's on that type of road class 6 or whatever I do believe they need to go to Stratford County and get a waiver or they have to file a waiver with Stratford County because basically we can't guarantee emergency services to anything so Carl knows this so I I will reach out through Mike to speak with him but I also see a couple of things a couple of additions and things that are happening over on the end of late and I just want to make sure one of some of these things that we're meeting the setbacks because we all know spots over there are very tight I see we have a new building permit a new building issue on Beach Beach Tree Drive so I would want to make sure that those setbacks are so I guess I can I can follow up with Mike to follow up on this Carl but
where's the one Pond Road
Pond Road's up
the class 6 road is that why
yeah well I think it's actually I think it's considered a private road but still I think well I think that's a patat and I think that's the case I think we're we're getting on that I think we're getting that back from the state as that's how they've classified it
is it private road
I think we gotta so we gotta just but however I do believe because of the way the such road it is is it's going to need a waiver they need to file a waiver with Stratford County
I understand the waiver process I just didn't know
well Scott is reaching out to the state to get a listing of the road roads from the town and how they're classified
I'm curious as to how it became a private road it's always been considered to be a class 6
well I think everybody's considered it as a class 6 but I think there's nothing that says the town's never maintained it and the town there's working on getting clarification on it so I just
that's all I need to know just curious how that process goes
well I'm not really familiar with the whole process I do hear it and so that the state has
it's always had to go before this allowance
yes
yeah I think this election had to approve it and then like you said they need a letter
right they need
I'm as surprised as you are that it's an issue they building permit
yeah so I will I will follow up on that I'll add it to my list
I'd be curious to know how many new builds we've had this year and we'll ring that next meeting that I would just I would like to know because it seems like there's a lot of new houses being built and like trying to try to like go through and it doesn't seem to be
so the number of new builds since January 1st
that yeah that would be nice to see I know there's a lot of lots that are now coming available but to see how many are actually being built
can I make a comment and ask a question
file me Steve
another question
the comment is I'm happy to be seeing you reviewing the building permit situation that was always a part of the planning for the two is my comment is is I know that I got once got a digital form of that it said any I think I've asked this before is any possibility that that will be put on town website or so people can just go in and say oh they got it
put on town website, or so people can just go in and say, oh, they got a building permit, or they don't have one?
I mean, we have the capability.
Well, but I think you, do you attach it to your minutes?
Uh, yes.
So it's attached, it would be attached to the minutes of the planning board each month?
There's a particular one, every, every month we.
Well, now that we've started, now that we've, yeah, no, now that we've started this process, yes, right, so Kate, now that we've started this process, it would, no, no, the idea is we will get it, and it'll be attached to the.
Yeah, every month, I was doing the building report, and everything we talk about here.
It'll be very helpful, a lot of people will, uh, will feel better about. Well, then the nice thing is, is them being attached to the meeting minutes, any questions or conversation we have will be in the minutes, so if you have the same question as one of us, it'll. Well, I was just looking at it, and just anybody living in the town wanting to know, hey, did they get a permit for it? Because we don't put the signs up anymore, and I thought about that.
Well.
So is, that's.
No, and it, no, and it's good to, it's, it's good to be aware and bring the question forward, Kate, because there are, there are plenty who do not seek a building permit, and they should.
Well, it's, whatever, but I'm just saying.
I, I hear you.
I know, we don't even have to say what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying. I'm picking up what's put down. I don't have any reports. It says reported members, I don't know about it. Oh, I do have, actually, I, I all address this, I think, so has everybody been over to, you have, you got your hopeful office for the planning board over at the old municipal building?
Oh, I know, I'll.
I'm just making sure, I need to follow up and see if John's is there.
John said he did it because he got on a couple of us that did not.
I might be the only one that isn't, but that's, I think, well, I mean, the only reason it might not be is because of Board of Selectmen's under wrap. I don't know why he needs to stay on office.
We get four, you know.
You can't, please do. So as far as I know, we should be, we should be good, okay. I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Sure.
Oh, I should actually follow up with Janet on that.
She gets four, too.
Yes, I know, she.
Well, the chip to change her, well.
Alternate. Right, and then I think, yeah, so I will follow up with her.
Well, you, the Board of Selectmen should have sent out one of them, because isn't there like a little?
It's supposed to, but that's why I said I don't think anyone. Okay, I got to follow up with her.
I take this time, there's plenty of, plenty of vacancies on the board, so if anyone's interested in spending quality time in these meetings.
Kate, you show up anyway, and you are helpful information.
Well, thank you.
So you can just, you know, change.
You can be an alternate, Kate, you don't even have to be, we'll, we'll just gradually bring you in, be an al, just sign up to be an alternate.
All the boards need people.
Well, right, but I mean, it would be good if you're just an alternate anyways, because if we didn't have a voting, you could, you are usually pretty dedicated about being here, so just kind of think about it. I don't know, okay, thank you. I do need something else, Kate, but.
I'm happy to march for John's judge.
Well.
I'm still here.
Yeah, is John still here?
In his chair.
We'll have to vote, we'll be, not another day, but.
Right, well, Rick, Kate, ask, Kate, ask Kate if someone has a phone number, and you can have a chat. Okay, go, go on, just.
Okay, uh, we digress. Reported members, is that just, anything?
No, I think that was just a report, I don't know what, that's what.
I think John just wants to fill that.
He might, he, yes.
He might have, he might have informed reports, and we're not going to.
I don't, that's what I said, the only thing I had to report is I wanted to ask.
Usually it's something.
Are zoning ordinances everybody that's working on, on things, I have not had a chance to look into the one that I was working on.
Um, I wasn't assigned anything, and I did make it to the workshop, so I mean, if somebody wants to, I mean, I may, I may be able to, but I.
I think John.
I did get assigned, I did get assigned a pretty big task at the Board of Selectmen meeting the other night, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, we really need to, well, we really might need to reach out and speak to the private, uh, or whatnot, because.
Timeline.
Timelines, as far as when things have to be posted to be put up for public hearing, if we want anything to get enacted, to be put on the ballot for March, we have deadlines that we have to meet, and I think they may start in November, so now that we've pushed the meeting out a week, we may be, well, it doesn't mean we can't need to go over that stuff, so we can have.
So maybe you focus.
So, yes, Robin, can we find out when we have to post and submit for?
You can, you can go out on NHMA's website.
Yeah, I could, I could pull up the calendar, right. I see, I think I sent you guys a copy of the timeline.
The calendar?
The calendar, yeah.
Well, I mean, I know, I always can go out, you know, I can always just go up to the NHMA.
I know John took some notes at the workshop, so he's got everything in one place.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I would, that's what I would use, Christine, just go out there and look at the calendar and see.
Okay.
Um, if you want the traditional.
Calendar?
No, the SB2. We're traditional, not SB2, um, and, I mean, I can.
I'll have to change it.
I can take a look at it as well.
Stuff like that.
Oh, I'll read the timeline. Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Um, do we have, or have we considered a, I guess, is it a growth management ordinance, where?
Yeah, so I know John and I kind of, I would just, I put a, wanted to put a bug in his ear and said, um, you know, thought about having, putting into place a limit on building permits.
I think in the town.
Which, which would be kind of going along with the growth ordinance for the town, um, and to limit that to say, I'm going to, I'll throw up, like, 15 new builds, and it could only get, then, like, we could limit, like, five of them can only, could be to the same contractor, the same contractor couldn't get all 15, or couldn't get more than five, or something like that, because, um, it's just, that was just something I had thrown out to John, and he's like, oh, that would be part of our growth management for the town, so that might be something that you could take a look at, research into that, Christine. Because I know we had, so I can tell you that, hmm, I did write it down, I did look. I've been going through, I went through some of the old, um, annual meetings, and there was, and it might have been in the 70s, I think it was, maybe around 78, 77, that they did put through a warrant article to limit the number of building permits.
And that's the late history, sort of expanded.
Yeah, but it was in the 70s, because I was looking for some other stuff, and I saw that.
That's where I'm going.
I thought that was kind of interesting, I thought that was kind of interesting, and I'm like, oh, well, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, between like 60, what, 64 and 80, that's when like, everything was built up.
We should ask.
No, it was probably more in the 70s.
We should ask the lawyer.
Because, because, um, maybe the town didn't take those roads until the 70s, started maintaining them. About what was.
Well, they were trying to.
No, we should, should we talk to lawyer about that, you know, the growth management, we, we don't want to get in legal trouble, but we need to find out.
No, well, anything that we could do, we have to.
Pass it along to them.
Yeah, John, just make sure.
No, and I think, you know, Christine can do some preliminary research, and then we can come back and say, this is our intent, this is what we would like to do, and we can get the legal input.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, anything we, anything, any type of article, warrant article, anything that goes, whether it's on the, from a planning board's perspective, from a town's perspective, all has to be reviewed by legal, signed off, or.
It's not like, maybe like a moratorium or this is.
It's not, yeah, or it's not like, or it's not like doing like a petition warrant article.
Right, well, you, you are correct, thank you.
Yeah, we always have legalized.
Okay, anybody have any comments, concerns?
I don't have.
Sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Can I, quick question? The layer that was submitted from my brother Joseph, is that something that, I don't know how it works, is that something that, that's a public?
It is.
It'll be attached to the minutes.
Okay.
Because it's taken, it is a part of the meeting.
Okay.
And it'll be a part, it'll be attached to the minutes.
Yeah, and your letter also will be part of the minutes, so.
I assume it would be.
Yeah.
And it's all true.
Right, so that's, so that's what we try and.
And is that a.
Anything that gets submitted, okay, we're not, we're not going to, anything that gets submitted in the meeting will get attached to the minutes, and it'll be posted, um, it'll be posted with the minutes.
Well, actually, within seven days, you can have a draft copy of it, um, but then approved copy gets posted online, so if you want to see that, like.
Oh, yeah, you can get it, yeah, the draft ones have to be available in the town.
Just, just ask, ask me, and they're, they'll be available.
Yeah.
One other quick question, so, um, you know, Janet was saying that you should talk with Mr. Hartford about, about easement or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't like doing any talking until we make to hear back from whether there's an actual obligation to provide an easement or not, you know what I'm saying? You know, I mean, if we.
That's your choice, John. We're, I'm just going to say, that's your choice.
But you, but you were going to get.
We're, yeah, right, we're going to reach out to legal, and we're going to ask them regarding the right, right way easement, right way easement to the area.
We've never seen.
And, and the issue regarding the butters and late situation.
Thank you, that's all, it's going to make sure that, you know, we won't wait until we get, you know, clarification.
The deeds, and the historic nature of deeds.
Yeah.
Who knows where it's written, or if it's written, that's what the lawyer.
Right.
So, yeah, we will leave it in the meetings, and then we will go by their.
Same.
Yep, yep. I don't have any other comments, and so with that.
So we did, we made the motion to change the meeting?
We did make the motion to change the meeting, we made the motion to recess the public hearing, or continue it, we recessed it until November 21st. Um, I will be here, I will call in, or, oh, what is it, Thursday?
It's Thursday 21st, so it's the week before Thanksgiving.
I'll try and call in, I'll be flying, so.
I guess I have to say this, though, if we do the 21st, and you're not going to be here, obviously.
So you're going to try and call in.
Okay, so if you can't call in, are we going to have a forum?
Janet will be.
Janet, and then John, John will show up, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you have the numbers.
Yeah, no, we should be good.
Yes, you know, a forum needs to make decisions, we don't need to take decisions.
Right, um, so with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at 7:31.
Second.
Listen, Karen?
Aye. All right.